Yeah.
Yeah.
I have known the toxic.
Just one of those.
Only.
That's what I want to show it. Is that. I don't know. Super cold, so I'll be dead. Yes. Background. She was still. You know, it's really low, but. And we burn.
I know.
I don't know.
And so did someone else shower? It's just my.
All right, so we can go ahead and kick this off. I'm sorry for the two minute delay. More paperwork than anticipated when I came in, but. Um, all right, so Debbie, you want to go ahead and call us to order?
Uh, Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
And Mr. Campbell.
Here. And um. Bev, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Here.
One of your ladies.
Hey, poor lady.
When they. In this soul. With the police translators.
Here.
Uh, I was. Guys, that's, I think that's feedback. At first, my brain was like, that's a person in the audience that just has horrible cadence. And who the heck is that? But I'm fairly.
She's, she's bad.
Yeah. We, we just wanted to challenge you tonight, Bev, and see how, how good you are at keeping that rhythm. Thank you, Bev. Um, so approval of minutes.
Um, I request a motion for the approval of the regular meeting minutes of January the eighth and the special meeting slash work session meeting on January fifteenth.
A move seconded.
Discussion roll call.
Uh, Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we'll move into departmental updates. Chief Proxman.
So as you know, Detective Justin Schultz is part of the Claremont County Narcotics Unit. It seems like I'm talking about his great work every uh, meeting and uh, this month is no exception. And the most impressive yet. So he had a confidential informant make a purchase of marijuana. Uh, that, that uh, purchase led to a search warrant in Dayton, Ohio. And what they recovered from the search warrant was six hundred and seventy-three thousand in currency. Three BMWs. Two uh, Rolex watches. Fifty-three pounds of marijuana and two hundred and twenty-nine THC cartridges, along with several laptops and phones. It's just incredible work uh, from, you know, he spearheaded this arrest. And uh, the, the sad thing is the county gets the money and Pierce Township doesn't get any.
What about the cars?
Uh, same, they, they will be the counties.
How, how many, how many BMWs you say there were?
Three. A uh. Twenty twenty BMW M five, a twenty eighteen BMW X six. And a twenty eighteen BMW five fifty I.
Wow.
Wow. I know you're sort of being facetious, but he is working uh, under the capacity of the county, sort of as a detective under the drug unit. Is that how that works?
Correct. And their, their belief is it benefits the entire county and that's our benefit of detailing him to the unit. So you never know when these investigations uh, transcend jurisdictions and then. God forbid, it comes into Pierce Township at some point.
Well, that's great.
That's all I have.
Thank you, chief. All right, um. Fire, uh, any MS, we will jump over tonight because we got our fire guys out uh, inspecting and making sure our new fire engine that we're purchasing is going to be. Good to go. Then it'll be shipped us from Kansas. So that's where our fire guys are this evening.
Wisconsin.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wisconsin.
He said there's lots of them.
I stand corrected. Um, so uh, one thing that we may want to discuss before I forget, I think is uh, Chief Wright talked about maybe having a, a special meeting. Tacked on to our work session that we're going to have in a, in a little bit to do some approvals that he's going to need when he gets back. Is that, is that correct?
Yep, that is correct. Um, I spoke with uh, legal counsel and we're all, we've uh, got an advertisement ready to go.
Okay.
So it'll be uh, advertised as a work session as well, economic development work session plus the fire items.
Gotcha. That's sort of tacked on same time, sort of starting that meeting at the same time. So no real discussion needed here tonight on that.
Nope, I think we should be good.
Making sure.
One, one other correction too, as um, I, I wrote the eighteenth for our economic development meeting. It's actually the nineteenth. So the, that's on the agenda incorrectly. So just to be aware for the record. That is the nineteenth.
Gotcha. All right. Service Director Kohler.
Um, we recently discovered there's a rather decent sized color bike that's. Failing in off East legendary, I believe the address like nine nine five or nine nine six. Um, it's probably going to cost probably roughly around. It's more between ten and fifteen thousand dollar replay. So, but we'll be doing that work in-house and. So it'll save us quite a bit of money. So I've been working with the homeowners that's adjacent to, to uh, get them to sign off that. Cause a little bit of, of the work will need to be outside of right away. So. Um, they're willing to. Have very ease month to do the work. So we're all good.
Good. All right, um. Just a quick side on that. Uh, you, you uh, I'm always angry. I'm always happy to hear that A, something's getting taken care of for another residence and B, it's getting done cheaper than we could do it if we farmed it out. But um, how do you uh? I'm just curious, how do, how do you determine that? Like, do you have a certain dollars per hour that you allocate to your employees and how long it may take them on a job to kind of weigh that up against? What it might cost to, to get an outside contractor? Or how, how do you do that?
Um, a lot of times I'll kind of, I'll talk to one of the former trustees, Rich Redible, who was a contractor. And um. He, you know, I'll take and bounce it off of him, you know, what would you charge for something like this? And then, you know, we can kind of make that determination.
Kind of compare it to, to what you're like, your hourly rate that you pay your guys?
Yeah.
And that's pretty much what you used, like your hourly, hourly rate for which you pay the guys?
Yeah, yeah. And well, the hourly rate and then plus their insurance and everything.
Okay. You tack that on us.
Yeah, well, everything that it costs is the employee that person.
All right, cool. All right, um.
Which um, at a later day, which will probably do the, in June, my plan is to do it in June. Um, we have to get all the paving for this year ready first and then all the curb work and stuff and then. We'll do it, we'll plan on June and then um, so. In future meeting, I'll be getting guys to um, approve to purchase the color bike and stuff, so. Which is rather expensive.
Gotcha.
As a fault with the price.
Good. All right, anything else, John?
No.
All right, uh, Michelle or Doug, Doug, Parks and Greenspace? I saw Michelle before I saw you. I pan left to right.
Right. All right, just an update on events. Um. So we do have a spring workday coming up on March twenty ninth. It's kind of looking, prepping for the Easter egg hunt, uh, scheduled for April the twelfth. Um. Do you have, and tonight you'll be approving uh, funding for the movies and the park for the licensing and the production and all of that. It uh, it falls under the budget that we submitted back in October, but um, we do need to get that so that we can get the, the vendor locked in. Uh, you know, for running those events. So first one scheduled for uh. May seventeenth. So movies we've selected this year for the first event is Wild Robot. It was kind of a newer animated film. Um. And in September, the daughter's purpose, in October eleventh, for the Halloween theme, uh, the original Beetlejuice, the selections there. So. Um, are working on the concert planning. Um. We uh. Gone into our meeting last week with, you know, trying to decide who, who we are going to select. We'd kind of settled on a, a Journey Tribute Band. And then a kind of country rock band for the October, uh, or not the October, August event called Denim Deluxe. We uh, did find out that the Journey Tribute Band is no longer available for June. Um, so we've kind of gone back and uh, kind of as a second to that is uh, it's called Death Band, but it's like popular, you know, music for the June event. Um, pretty good draw. So um, that should be coming to you in March's meeting, I guess, as far as the approval for those uh, those dollars. But again, it'll be within the budget that we provided back in October. So. And that's all I've got.
Thanks, Doug. Right.
So uh, Back George Road is, is open. There should be no obstructions or anything for the foreseeable future. Uh, all the contractors working in the remediation know uh, the process now, who to contact. Uh, and to work through the engineer's office for any kind of questions or information they might need. Uh. So you might be seeing a request potentially sometime in the, in the coming weeks as, as far as when they start their work back up in the spring and that sort of thing. Uh, cybersecurity training is uh, we, we have almost one hundred percent completion from um. All staff and everyone. Uh, so we'll work toward that. We're a little over seventy-five percent. So O-Tarmo wanted to see us kind of do some cybersecurity harassment trainings and make those available and that sort of thing. You'll see a little bit more of that later in the agenda, just about a form, more formal policy for uh, cat, catching people at onboarding stages and things like that for the trainings. Uh, we're working on the goal setting. So next month you should have um, kind of a solid draft of goals, objectives and things to, to adopt and move forward on. And the police levy fact page was uh, was launched uh, and within the past week as well. So Carl worked with the police department. Got uh, put on our website as well as on Facebook circle and that sort of thing as well. That's all I have.
Two more quick questions with the Backdoor thing. I think there was two other components to that. One was a bridge that needed to be repaired and there were some brush that was going to be cut back. Uh, the brush part, I thought we, we maybe as a township could take care of and the bridge was, I think more county or. Do you have any more information on either of those two items?
We definitely discussed, we definitely discussed the bridge repairs. And so that was something Jeremy Evans was working very closely with them on. Uh, as far as the brush, we did, I do not recall discussing that. I don't know if. Mr. Kohler has any insight on that, but I can definitely follow up on the brush aspect of it as well. There was, there was signage that was, was, that was left there by the crews. That was one of the other things that they definitely taken that down as well, but I'll follow up on the brush and make sure that it was cleared.
Yeah, I want to say, and the initial complaint we got, which kind of uh, precipitated all this, there was some component of that that was brush related, like it was blocking a, a line of view or something like that.
Is it the bottom of pond run when you come across the bridge on the left-hand side? I think O dot got it. In fact, I know O dot got it. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, um. So coming up next is a couple of executive session items we. Want to hop in and discuss briefly. So uh. We'll go ahead and make motions on the executive session items. Uh, of course, we have other business to attend to when we get out of these new business, several agenda items. So, you know. Of course, it's possible we could take action on these, but we'll try to make it as brief as possible. So you guys don't have to wait around for too long. Do I have a motion to adjourn an executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, section one two, one point two-two G eight? The, to discuss confidential information related to an economic development prospect.
So moved second.
Uh, motion to adjourn an executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, section one two, one point two-two G one, to consider the employment dismissal, dis. Discipline or compensation of a public employee.
So moved seconded.
Uh, motion to adjourn into executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, section one two, one point two-two G two, to consider the sale or purchase of public property.
So moved seconded.
Okay. All right. Roll call on this, uh.
Yep.
Um. Mr. Freeman.
Yep.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Campbell.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes. She has to go through each one, so.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. K- uh, Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes, say yes three times. Yes, yes, yes.
You want to run through it three times?
No, we got it. We got it. It's good. It's good.
All right, we'll be right back.
So, mics on.
We're back.
Alright, so we're back from executive session. I need a motion to come out of each executive session or just one? Yeah, gotcha. So I need a motion to come out of executive.
It's a move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes, so we're gonna hop into new business at the end to be sure we're gonna have a couple items we're gonna add on to this that are related to discussion we had in executive session, so we will hit those toward the end of the agenda here. So Debbie, you wanna start us off for new business?
I sure do, okay. Um, I request a motion for approval of the payment of payroll for the month of January 2025 in the amount of $600,000. I sure do. Okay. Um, I request a motion for approval of the payment of payroll for the month of January 2025 in the amount of six hundred sixty seven thousand two hundred three dollars and thirty five cents.
So moved. Second.
Motion, second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Debbie.
I request a motion for approval of the payment of the bills for the month of January in the amount of five hundred three thousand six fifty seven sixty three.
So moved. Second.
Motion, second discussion, roll call.
Um, Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
And I have one.
Sweep.
Sure.
I request a motion to allow Claudia to carry over forty hours, up to forty hours of vacation time.
Gotcha.
So moved. Second.
Let's try to get that on the actual agenda next time. It's been going on for an entire year, dude. Alright, motion in a second, uh, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Kim Bellis.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
That's all.
Sweep, sweep, sweep.
Oh, I request a motion to, um, and I just got this today too.
Hmm, okay, that's alright.
Um, to set up a sweep account with Park National Bank where our account is at, um, maintaining too much funds in the general account, which is not getting any interest, but if I put it over into a sweep, it will earn around two percent worth of interest. And if needed, it will automatically sweep over back and forth, and there's no fees.
I see. I do think we were getting a small amount of interest on our general fund account, right?
Very, very.
Yeah, so, but it wasn't none. It was a little bit. Okay. I think that's a great idea. Yeah, that's a good idea. Have a motion.
Motion. Second.
Motion, a second, discussion, roll call.
Uh, Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
You're welcome. No problem. I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Chief Rocksmith.
I request a motion to purchase four mobile data computers from Bizgo Technologies for ten thousand nine hundred and thirty six dollars.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Alright, um. We have some Craig. Oh, uh, Steve, do you have one more?
Yes, I request a motion to purchase two sets of body armor from Protec Sales for two thousand six hundred fifty three dollars and sixty eight cents.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Okay. So we've got a couple motions from, uh, the fire chief here.
Yes, sir. I was gonna read them off.
I've added.
A fire chief Craig Wright requests a motion to approve the annual invoice from the Claremont County Fire Chiefs Alliance to include membership dues and cooperative purchasing access to the Blaze Stack Fire Investigation Software in the amount of two thousand nine hundred fifty six dollars and twenty five cents.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Alright, Chief Wright, more handsome. Chief Wright, you're up.
Fire Chief Craig Wright requests a motion to approve the appointment of Cameron McCaffey and Forrest Hale as part-time firefighter EMTs at the established rate pending successful completion of an Ohio BCI Criminal Background Check and Pre-Employment Physical, noting that we are waiting the results of the background check and physicals.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Uh, Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Okay, Chief Wright, anything else?
I have no sir.
Alright. Service Director Kohler.
I request a motion to purchase three replacement APX N thirty radios and accessories from Motorola in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred fifty seven dollars.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. John.
I request a motion, motion to purchase three multi-zone condensers with wall mounts and wiring from Mr. Cool in the amount of four thousand two hundred eighty four dollars and forty nine cents.
So moved. Second.
What? Are you talking multi-zone condenser? What's going on?
There, there are many splits is what they're considered.
Thank you for leaving me more confused than my first question. What is a mini split?
They're opposite of the major split. Exactly. Don't you know?
It's HVAC.
Okay.
In the past, we've been running, like in the summertime, we've been running, um, like three window units.
Yeah.
That are very, very, eh, efficient.
Okay.
And, and then in the wintertime, where the offices are, is very, very hot, and, and the break room is very, very cold. So this is, there'll be three zones, and basically make it three zones. You'll be able to control each one, each temperature within that zone, um, off three different heads, and basically, we won't have window units blowing right onto people, and they're like a twenty seater efficiency. It's
Gotcha. Just to make it a little more comfortable for you guys to hang out in the offices.
Well, yeah.
Roger that. Yeah, where, where are you, you know, where you typically out in the field, or what do you, what do you?
Well, when we come in for lunch.
Yeah.
And, you know, different things, you know, and then plus we have the public coming in, and we had the air conditioner. I mean, it was blowing straight on the, where the window is, and where the desk is set up, where everything's set up, it's blowing right on the people, and you had to turn it off during that time.
Right.
And it's an all-blocked building.
Yeah.
Well, it gets hot very fast.
Yeah.
When you turn it off, and sometimes it can take up to an hour or so to do one.
Okay. I've yet to see the public enter into that building back there, but it could be.
We
Could be.
We actually have them quite a bit.
But the tens of thousands just lining up. Alright, so I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Alright, John, one more.
I request a motion by the trust, I re- I request a motion by the trustees to certify the record of Pierce Township mileage for twenty twenty four at sixty seven point nine five two miles per documentation provided by the Ohio Department of Transportation.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Coral, you're up.
Coral.
So Coral.
Coral.
Well, this motion is what Doug was discussing before, relating to the Parks Department requesting a motion to approve the expense of three thousand three hundred and forty one dollars and seventy cents for equipment rental and film licensing. The park budget funds will be used for these expenses.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Coral.
Requesting a motion to add requirements to the township personnel policy regarding sexual harassment prevention and cyber security awareness. We have both of these training set up and ready to go, and this will just add it to the personnel policy.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Alright, uh, so Eddie, you're up again.
Okay, uh, I request a motion to accept Mary Bird of Cogashaw's resignation.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Uh, I request a motion to approve addendum number two for energy consulting and management for Treybell LLC. The addendum shall expire on June first, twenty twenty five. Uh, further included, I will add, um, into the, into the record, uh, the LOA and the new addendum that we received today as well.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Okay, I request a motion to approve the updated director of planning, community development job description.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Okay, I request a motion to approve the joint contract extension for Troutman Realtors.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Okay, I request a motion to pass resolution number twenty twenty five oh oh three, a resolution providing for the declaration of a nuisance for a structure located at seventeen Ticketway. So, um, this structure was subject to a fire, uh, in late December. We've sent a nuisance letter. We also reached out by phone to the property owner. This will just start the process. Uh, we have every intention of working with the property owner as much as possible, but again, uh, the nuisance process, if it gets delayed, could take, could take a long time. So we just wanted to at least get it ready and kind of get it rectified.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Okay, so we have a, a couple other additional items that are gonna be added to the agenda, um, sort of in response to our, uh, executive session. So, um, these items are gonna be related to, uh, uh, there are six different, um, motions, but they're gonna be related essentially three different categories. So Eddie, you want to go ahead and discuss that and?
Sure. Yep. So the, the first motion is to approve resolution twenty two, uh, twenty twenty five oh oh four for the sale of one nineteen Main Street, which is the Victorian property.
We need to, we need to, yeah.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, uh, we will move to amend the agenda for these additional motions. So I'd have a motion to move the, amend the agenda for additional motions.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes, thank you, Alan.
So, uh, I request a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five oh oh four for the sale of one nineteen Main Street, which is the Victorian property, and authorize the administrator to take all necessary actions to complete the transfer of the property. A de-discretion to prevent the demolition of the Victorian structure is part of the agreement, and the sale further includes the two adjoining parcels.
So moved. Second.
Eddie, I would like you to discuss that just a little more detail about what, what, sort of what we're selling it for, what it was appraised at initially.
Sure.
And I mean, we've done our homework on this, and we feel like this is, is a good course of action at this point, particularly considering we're paying a lot of, not a lot, but a fair amount of monthly expenses to continue to maintain and keep this building going. So can you explain a little bit more about that before we approve this?
Absolutely. So, uh, this property is the former, uh, one of the former Village of Amelia governmental buildings, and it's, uh, been deemed to have some historic value, and the community also finds significant value in it, particularly the aesthetics of it. So, uh, it came into our possession jointly with Batavia in twenty nineteen, and it's effectively, um, does not have a public purpose for our township at this point in time, but it has been something that we've been attempting to maintain, uh, as far as maintaining the utilities and the property generally. And so that's been a recurring cost. So we've made attempts to advertise it over the years to try and sell this property, and we've, uh, recently, uh, worked with Troutman Realtors to formally list it as well. So it's been on the market for a number of months, and one of the, uh, purchase offers that we received was from, uh, CAH Huber, which is a preservation and redevelopment firm that's done extensive work throughout Batavia and also has recently worked on the Morse House to kind of rejuvenate and revitalize the Morse House. So they, they made an offer on the, on the property, and they've also agreed to preserve the structure in perpetuity as well and bring it to productive use. So that was deemed to be a high-value target for, uh, in the land use plan with all the public feedback we received as well, preserving historic fabric of Amelia and, and the township, um, was something that we heard that, uh, was a significant priority. So, um, they're, they're offering six hundred thousand dollars for this particular site. Um, and based off of discussions that we've had with our, uh, realtor, Troutman, Troutman Realtors, they've indicated that, um, this is a really significant kind of, almost like a unicorn buyer, so to speak, as far as it's very difficult to find, uh, buyers that are both looking to preserve the structure, kind of limit themselves in that regard to maintain the structure, but also, uh, push it to productive use and, and invest more or less in the historic revitalization of this, of the facility.
Okay.
Well, and I think, I think something really important to, to emphasize is that this deal is very, it's what we heard from the community. You said it a few minutes ago, but I want to illustrate that, uh, and really bring it home. A lot of folks in the community told us they did not want this building torn down, and it had a significant, uh, not just a historic significant, but a lot of folks in the community, um, really cared for the building, and they didn't, they didn't want to see it torn down. So it was a significant part of what the community was telling us. They wanted to hear, see in a deal, and that's, and that's why I'm very happy that that's what we've, we were able to bring back.
Yep. That's a great point, and I, I do think that we've done a decent job of shooting that gap between maintaining the building as it is and still getting a pretty good, you know, pretty fairly close to the market value for the building, because it was appraised several years ago, and prices continue to go up, so I feel pretty good about it. So I do have a motion, a second, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? Yes.
So for that particular, for the Victorian site itself, it was three seventy five, and then the adjoining parcels were also included in this as well, which I believe one was also at around three hundred, another was in the hundreds as well.
I believe it was in the eight hundred thousand range.
Yeah.
Don't quote me too much on that, but I, 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 I think it was around that area.
I think that the asking price was about nine hundred thousand.
But, but also.
No one came, came close.
You do have to keep in mind that it's only, well, it's only worth what somebody's willing to pay for it. We did have it on the market for quite some time and really saw, I, I don't think a whole lot of interest at all, but you know, particularly with the caveat that we want the structure to maintain. It was a difficult structure to work with in some regards, because it's kind of segmented and truncated, and it's hard to kind of, you know, it doesn't have a whole lot of big open spaces in there. It's a neat building, but limited use. Okay. Any other public comment on that? Alright, so I have a motion, second, uh, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five oh oh five, authorizing the administrator to execute the agreement for the exchange of real estate with Batavia Township, and further authorizing the administrator to perform all necessary actions to complete the transfers. So this motion would effectively close the books on the remaining properties that Batavia Township has ownership on in, uh, in Pierce Township. So there's nine properties. They own about thirty five percent of that, of that share.
So just, just to, to do a history lesson, um, this is a remnant from the dissolve of, of Amelia. State of Ohio required, um, that Batavia and Pierce Township enter into a development, into a, a real estate agreement, um, not just a real estate, but an entire asset agreement where everything was split sixty five, thirty five, including properties owned by the former Village of Amelia. So these properties are part of that, and this would clean that up. That would end this agreement, and the two townships could go about their merry way.
So, uh, that's good explanation then, but in addition to that, with the sale of the property for the Victorian, essentially that property would be sold, we would get sixty five percent of that, of those proceeds, Batavia Township get thirty five, and then once you value out the remaining properties that are on our side, that we still own sixty five, and they own thirty five percent of, based off the market value, I think, again, from an appraisal that was done a couple of years ago, then the, the net difference is, what do we owe on that?
Approximately, we would net about a hundred and thirty thousand or so.
To owe Batavia Township.
So we would, in order to buy out Batavia's share, it's two hundred and forty two thousand.
Two hundred and forty two. So by the time we sell that property and we get the proceeds off that, and we pay Batavia Township for their percentage of the properties that they still have a percentage ownership on our side, we're, we're netting about two forty something.
We'll, we'll net one, we'll net one thirty after we, after we make them haul.
Okay. Alright.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second discussion, Michelle.
So there's a, there's a number, there's a listing of properties, uh, that include a number of Sutton Way parcels, which are in Sedona, and then the Huntsman Straits parcel, which is behind Dollar Tree, then I believe, um, Oak Street, Maple and Oak, the police, the old PD building parcel, and the one behind it as well. You're welcome.
Which we already, we already own sixty five percent of every one of those. Now we're gonna own a hundred percent of all of them.
Set the pie out the other thirty five.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more public discussion, comments? Alright, motion, a second, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion to adjust and set wages for part-time firefighter EMTs at seventeen seventy five per hour and firefighter paramedics at twenty seventy five per hour, effective the first payroll of twenty twenty five, with longevity increases at the five, ten, and fifteen-year marks of Pierce Township.
So moved. Second.
Okay, to, to, a quick background on this, we had some firing EMTs, particularly part-timers and guys at sort of the base level entry into the organization that we felt were under, sort of under the industry average, right? So, and this is a tool to kind of bring them up closer to what and this is a tool to kind of bring them up closer to what, what will be more competitive and get better talent and, and, you know, more easily recruit people into the fire department. Is that accurate?
That's accurate, yeah.
And then that is gonna have a knock on effect, everything sort of above it, and we have to make a few adjustments there.
Yeah, and, um, using staff hours to, uh, to constantly manage turnover does, it, it is a pretty sneaky, um, expenditure that really wears down staff and obviously eats cost as well. So having a more stable, uh, stable roster is gonna be a significant benefit.
So we have made sort of a decision as a board collectively and as an organization that we're gonna prioritize, you know, service and quality for the residents and try to ensure that we have the right people in the right spaces to provide good service. It's kind of where that stemmed from. I thought I would give a quick background.
One, one thing too, you know, the fire chief's not here to say it, but one other thing too is that the levy, um, they've been really good stewards of, of their levy funds for quite some time, and they've, they've made attempts to, uh, set pretty aggressive grant seeking goals to cover equipment, other expenses and things like that. So they've really put themselves in a position to, um, you know, make, make certain, do proposals in order to aggressively recruit and so forth as well.
So they've been responsible with a taxpayer dollar, but it only goes so far. Some regards.
Yes.
So Eddie, you want to comment just briefly, just a note review, not all the specifics of how staff looked at other departments and so forth, so that folks have a general idea of how we got there.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, the command staff did a really good job of researching, particularly targeting in southwestern Ohio, a number of the different departments where they saw that they were losing, losing staff as well as kind of being, for lack of a better term, kind of out, outbid more or less. And so they were seeing that there were certain positions that they were advertising and they just weren't filling. And so they were continuously putting in the, the man hours to try and recruit, but when the numbers don't line up for, for staff, it, it, it becomes insurmountable. And so they did the research on determining kind of what, what those wages looked like across the board and kind of what the, for lack of a better term, kind of competitive, competing agencies were doing and made a value judgment in that regard and, uh, determine, you know, kind of what it would take in order to structure their, their recruitment process better.
Just for everyone's information, so.
Yeah.
We all understood that, but thank you.
Absolutely. Alright, any more discussion from the board? Public comment? I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Okay, I request a motion to provide a general pay adjustment as set forth in the attached list to fire department employees not covered by a current collective bargaining agreement for the calendar year twenty twenty five, including fire department command staff. The adjustment will be effective as of the first pay period of twenty five.
So moved second.
Motion, a second, public comment? Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion to provide a general pay adjustment of three percent for administration, police department, and service department employees not covered by a current collective bargaining agreement for the calendar year twenty five. The adjustment will be effective as of the first pay period of twenty five.
So moved second.
Motion, a second, public comment? Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion to enter into an exclusive operating agreement with Shangri-La.
Okay.
I think we need to go into a little more detail on what Shangri-La is.
Yeah, so.
It sounds very happy.
Yeah. So, um, there is a, um, general, uh, process in place, uh, in order to enable certain cannabis dispensary operations to begin operations in the township. And as part of that framework, the, the trustees passed a framework for properly regulating those uses. And Shangri-La is an operator that has reached out, targeted a particular site in state, uh, particularly, um, eleven forty three State Route one twenty five, looking to open operations, and part of that is entering into an operate, um, operating agreement with the board of trustees and then obtaining a conditional use permit through the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so this is the first step in the process.
And this was laid out in a piece of legislation that we put, that we voted on three months ago, four months, I don't, I don't remember that, the timeframe, but several months ago, we voted on the framework. Shangri-La is following the framework as we've laid it out.
That is correct.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Wait, when the lawyer frowns, it makes me nervous. Was there some? Oh, okay. Alright, alright. I always frown on lawyers.
Hold your ground, David.
Did you motion?
Yes.
A second.
Okay, do I have public comment? Come on up. It's John.
Just from the name, uh, that brings up the curiosity, what is Shangri-La?
Well, it's a fictitious place where, no, um.
Off to go.
It's, uh, it's a marijuana dispensary.
John, you can stay up there.
If you want to, come on, stand up. Um, it's a, it's a marijuana dispensary. Cannabis, sorry, cannabis dispensary.
So to be sure, there is already cannabis dispensaries that have operated in different townships throughout the state, and they will, uh, oftentimes enter into revenue sharing agreements with the township where the revenue that comes in through the cannabis shop is then shared with the township. So our goal is to sort of enter into agreement sort of like that where it, it's a rising tide lifts all boats scenario that people have already voted on it in the state. Uh, they've spoken, uh, it is legal. And so our, our, um, goal is to, uh, sort of, um, ensure that, uh, we uphold that and at the same time also offer an opportunity for a cannabis shop to come into the township where everybody can benefit from that opportunity. So that's kind of what we're, what we're trying to shoot for some extent. So.
Did we vote on that?
And.
Motion, but no roll call.
We had a motion, a second, right? Alright, any other comment, public comment? Nothing else? Okay. I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Alright.
Is that it?
Is that it, Eddie?
Yep.
That was all six? Okay. So that brings us to the end of our, uh, items. Do we have any other public, uh, comment or open floor discussion? Everybody else? Nothing? Okay. Other business?
I have none.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
So moved. Or did you just move?
Second.
I have a motion.
Can we debate that?
I have a motion to second. Do I have any public comment? I'm hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Thank you everybody for coming. Uh, next meeting, February eighteenth.
You got it.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then.